Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council meeting for the evening of April the 15th. Hope everybody filed your taxes or something appropriate. We will begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Drew Arlisgus with the Mountain Vista Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all good things that you've given us. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our leaders. Father, we accept everything good from your hand and we look to you for all of our needs. I pray for our leaders. I pray that you bless them. Bless them with compassion for anyone as they listen to people, with wisdom, with discernment, to make good decisions for the good for the city. Thank you, Father, for these things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda this afternoon is a couple of awards and recognitions. First, I'd like to proclaim May the 4th, 2019, as Sonoran Desert Corral Day. The Sonoran Desert Corral is celebrating its 25th year of bringing joy and harmony to the community. They've done a lot of great things in this community. They sponsor the Mesa Public Schools Choral Festival and have awarded more than $15,000 in scholarships to high school students. This proclamation is also in honor of the corral's founder and departing music director, that's Jeff Harris, who's well-known to the community, former Westwood Choral Director, who's 31 years with the Mesa Public Schools, 21 years with the United Methodist Church, and 25 years with the corral, has earned him the Arizona Music Educators Association 2008 Arizona Music Educator of the Year Award and the 2015 Lifetime Achievement Award. Here tonight to accept the proclamation is Jeff Harris and John Page, President of the Sonoran Desert Corral. I'd invite you to come forward, share a few thoughts with us. We do have another award after this, and then following those two awards, we'll come down and take a photograph. But welcome, John and Jeff. I understand you might also have an event coming up in the near future.
We do. On the 4th, in fact.
Great.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Jeff Harris, and I'm the founding director of the Sonoran Desert Corral. It's a group that started in my living room 26 years ago here in Mesa and made up of many, many Mason Mesa folks coming from the various excellent high schools that we produce here. And we have, I have former students singing with me right now. And we have been in Mesa. We are one of the affiliate founding affiliates of the Mesa Arts Center. And we have chosen over the years to use First United Methodist Church, which has its historic, or the historic designation, as our performance site. And we have done a few performances in the MAC as well. It's made up of community people from all over the valley, many of which are from Mesa. So it's a pleasure to have you recognize the corral. We have our last concerts, the weekend of the 4th and the 5th, the 4th being here at First United Methodist Church. It's called Sing On, and it's my last concert. Facing that has been a daunting task, to choose music that represents 25 years. But it's a pleasure. And it's been a pleasure being a part of downtown Mesa. We think that we have brought to Mesa an additional vitality to the city. So we appreciate your support.
Well, thank you, Jeff. And we'll come down and give you a proclamation there. John, do you have anything to add to that?
I would only like to add that as I'm president of the board for the Sonoran Desert Corral and a singing member of the corral, and just want to say I thank you, Jeff, for the 25 years and the wonderful experiences that the entire corral has shared. He will be missed. The corral is continuing. We're looking forward to that. He left us in a good place, and will continue to entertain the city of Mesa and all of Arizona going forward. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I look forward to joining you at your event on the May 4th.
Thank you. Just one caveat. We have taken our music across the world. We have been to Europe six times representing Mesa and the good things that happen right here. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Please have a seat, and we'll come down and take a photo with you in just a moment. Next, we have an Arbor Day proclamation presented by Donna DiFrancesco, the Conservation Coordinator of the Environmental and Sustainability Division. Donna?
Hello. Hi, everyone. Greetings, Mayor Giles and council members. We're excited to be here with you tonight for the event we know you look forward to all year, the reading of the mayor's Arbor Day proclamation. Am I right?
Absolutely.
All right? I'm excited once again to let you know that our Tree City USA application for our 2018 activities has been approved by the Arbor Day Foundation. And we're proud that we are now a Tree City USA for our ninth year. And that was per recommendation by council for us to, you know, go for getting that designation. So we appreciate the support. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation and helps provide cities with direction, technical assistance, and the public attention about trees and our urban forest health in our communities. One of our requirements to be a Tree City USA is to have an Arbor Day observance and to have our mayor sign an Arbor Day proclamation, which is why we're here tonight. I wanted to tell you about another project that's been going on. Since May of 2017, we have had a very special project that's taking place here in Mesa. And I thought tonight would be a great opportunity to share it with you and everyone else out there in the audience. The Nature Conservancy, the Maricopa County Department of Public Health, the Urban Resilience to Extreme Sustainability Research Network, and Arizona State University's Urban Climate Research Center launched a precipit, how do I say that? Precipitory heat action planning effort to identify both mitigation and adaptation strategies to reduce heat directly and improve the ability of residents to deal with heat. Now, I know that sounded a little complex. So in a nutshell, because I have to get at least one tree pun in there, in a nutshell, bada boom, here's a simpler explanation, which is it gets really hot here. You all know that. And this can cause heat-related illnesses and even death. These groups that I just mentioned, made up of some really smart scientists, got together, talked to community members in the impacted and vulnerable neighborhoods in our city, and looked at developing creative ideas of how we can lessen those impacts. Trees, of course, being one of those methods to help cool our communities. For assistance with community engagement, these scientists worked with Rayo Mesa, which I know we have a member here, and Catholic Charities Care Campus, formerly known as Care Partnership. And during many of the community meetings, many of City of Mesa staff also participated, including Jody Sorrell, Laura Heineman, Zach Cosseha, Jeff McVeigh, Lindsay Belinky, and others. And that is why tonight that I've asked the following presenters to assist us with the reading of the Arbor Day proclamation, and for them to include a few brief words about the study. So here tonight with us, they'll come up in just a moment, is Christian Stumpf, the Director of External Affairs at the Nature Conservancy. We also have Johanna Richards, the Residential Service Specialist with Catholic Charities Community Services, and Melissa Guardaro. She's a PhD candidate at ASU School of Sustainability and also is an adjunct faculty at MCC Red Mountain, where she teaches sustainability classes. Before they come up, I also want to mention that we will have Arbor Day tree planting planned for Arapine Park. It is at 9:15 South Horn, located right across from Holmes Elementary. We have a wonderful kindergarten teacher, Ms. Sanders, who's going to have her class come out and assist us with the tree planting. And so we'll get those details to everyone soon if anyone wants to attend with that. And so with that, I would like to have these folks come up and talk to you a little bit and read the, help read the proclamation. Had I known the coral group was here, I would have had them sing it, but I think they'll do a fine job. So please come on up. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, and mayor and council members. It's good to see some familiar faces. And as a resident of Mesa, thank you for considering this proclamation. If you're not familiar with the Nature Conservancy, we're a leading global conservation organization that focuses on protecting the land and waters on which all life depends. So the latest project, though, at Mesa is, so in Maricopa County, heat kills more than 150 people and hospitalizes almost 2,000 people annually. Trees help to counteract heat-related illness by reducing local air temperatures by as much as 10 degrees. And when, you know, considering city planning today, it's important to remember that nature can offer a big assist when doing that, especially with heat. Trees provide walkable corridors that are cool and that can benefit residents' health and well-being. So thank you for your consideration, and I will pass it on to Melissa.
Thank you, mayor and council members. We did three workshops in Mesa over the heat of the summer. Residents gave up their Saturday mornings, and here are just some of their concerns that, especially for the Mesa area. They're concerned about the amount and quality of shade, especially the long routes to school or during long wait times at traffic lights. They especially were looking for a solution that would either make it a diagonal crossing or something shading on those very, very long traffic lights. They were concerned about access to drinking water, because when you're walking and there is no place to get or refill your water bottle, it's a problem, especially in the hot months. They were worried about connectivity from the community to broader transportation routes and the long wait times that they had in between buses. And they were worried about safety for their children and the elderly, excuse me, especially those living alone. So the community came up with some really unique solutions, and we're in the process of putting together a heat action plan, and I would hope that we would share it with you at some time in the future. Thank you.
Okay. I will read the first part of the proclamation. Whereas Mesa encourages tree planting to create great public spaces such as our community parks and neighborhoods, to also increase property values, buffer traffic noise, and enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and...
Whereas we harvest nutritious foods from trees in the form of fruits and nuts from our local farms, community gardens, or on our own backyards, and...
Whereas trees are environmental workers that remove CO2 and other greenhouse gases from our communities, while they provide oxygen, purify the water and air, reduce soil erosion, supply food and shelter to wildlife, and provide shade and wind barriers that conserve energy, and...
Whereas urban designers and land planners have recognized that a city strategy that incorporates trees helps to create networks of walkable, cool corridors that contribute to connectivity, health, and well-being, and...
Whereas programs like Tree City USA and Arbor Day continue to be pivotal opportunities to plant and maintain trees for future generations. And we enthusiastically encourage all Mesa citizens to plant trees, celebrate Arbor Day, and support intentional efforts to protect our trees and urban forests.
Great. Well, thank you. We're happy to issue these two proclamations. Council, please join me down at the podium for photographs. And again, congratulations on these two important events.
[applause]
We'll just go off of your lead.
You have the proclamation broken up into different, oh, maybe I'll hold it up. Is that all right?
Oh, sure. Are they written on?
That's all right. No one can see it. There you go. There you go.
Can we all crowd in here? Sometimes we turn. Okay. No? Are we pitting? Okay, here we go. We're going to smile at the cameras in the back.
Say "trees."
Trees.
Trees.
Okay, we're good. Thank you very much.
All right. Great. There you go.
Thanks, guys.
All right. If we could have the corral come up.
David, how are you? Good to see you. I see you.
Okay. I should have known you two guys were going to come up.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Eric. Friends for a long time.
We brought along members of our board members.
Good to see you.
Just like what you do, it takes a village. And these board members are integral as to what we do. So...
Great. Thank you. And May the 4th, are you having like kind of a Star Wars themed event?
Is there a proclamation? Is there a proclamation?
There is a proclamation, and the mayor probably left it up on the podium.
That's okay.
Oh, we have a great city manager, though. Look at that. Thank you very much.
He'll hold it up from behind you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Here we go.
All right. Cheese, everybody. That looks very good. Got at least six or seven.
Okay. We'll smile at these folks over here now.
How do you do, Karen? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
See how good I am.
Good to see you. You know what? You should come and join us on the 4th. His last hurrah. Yeah, that's it. Well, I'm going to retire from the church, so this is the last thing. This is the last one.
Looks like everyone's here. Okay. Before we proceed with the consent agenda, I think it'd be entirely appropriate for us to just acknowledge that we lost a real hero in our community this last week. Wayne Palmeroy was the mayor of Mesa in the late 1970s, a beloved individual in our community. A lot of very significant things occurred in Mesa during his tenure as mayor. I was personally privileged to serve with Wayne on the city council and to admire him since I was in high school, serving on the mayor's youth committee. So this is, I know, a very personal loss for many people in our community, but it's also a collective loss for our community. So would you please stand and join with me in a moment of silence in commemoration of Wayne Palmeroy? Thank you very much. And I know, I think the funeral arrangements have been made, and I believe they're for Thursday of this week, but we'll post that online in case folks in the public would like to participate in that. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We invite Kevin Christopher Forward to read that for us.
Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for American Legion Luke Greenway Post 1, one-day event, April 20th, Riverview Park, 2100 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Blue Thunder Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club, one-day event, April 18th, 922 South Country Club Drive. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for East Valley Community Foundation, three-day event, April 26th, 27th, and 28th, Keno Junior High School, 848 North Horn. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Dos Gringos Mexical, 1958 South Greenfield Road. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Macao Restaurant, 1920 South Dobson Road. Item 4A, act on contract for purchase of a digital sign solution upgrade for the Mesa Convention Center as requested by the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4B, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for performance cooling water treatment program for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4C, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for entertainment and production services for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department and the Arts and Culture Department. Item 4D, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for aftermarket parts for automotive and light-duty trucks for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4J, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for emergency vehicle equipment and installation services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4K, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for APG Neuros Turbo Blower Parts and Services for the Water Resources Department. Item 4L, act on contract to purchase five replacement light-duty pickup trucks for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4M, act on three-month extension with a three-month extension option and dollar limit increase to the term contract for Bridgestone tires for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Fleet Services and Mesa Fire and Medical Departments. Item 4N, act on contract to purchase 36 additional mobile vehicle routers and related equipment and services for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4O, act on contract to purchase two replacement utility trailers for the Transportation Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 4P, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for Phillips City Touch Street Light Monitoring System additions for the Transportation Department. Item 4Q, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for eliminated street name signs, supply and maintenance for the Transportation Department. Item 4R, act on contract for ropes and electrical substation, East Bay Transformer, switchgear replacement, construction manager at risk project, guaranteed maximum price number one, with project funding from 2014 authorized electric bonds. Item 4S, act on contract for Southern Avenue, Greenfield Road to Higley Road, arterial roadway improvements project. This project's funded by 2013 authorized street bonds and 2010 authorized gas bonds. Item 4T, act on contract for venture-out drainage improvements project. This project's funded by a flood control district of Maricopa County grant and highway user revenue funds. Item 4U, act on one-year term contract with two years of renewal options for five master job order contracts, three contracts for the general utility construction services and two contracts for specialty utility construction services. Item 4V, act on one-year term contract with two years of renewal options for two master job order contracts for landscape construction services. Item 4W, act on contract for water line and gas line replacement project at various locations throughout the city. This includes a construction manager at risk selection and pre-construction services contract. Item 5A, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by New Leaf to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5B, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by AT Still University's National Center for American Indian Health Professions to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5C, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Child Crisis Arizona to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5D, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Gene Lewis Boxing Club to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5E, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Helen's Hope Chest to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5F, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Junior Achievement to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5G, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Mesa Public Schools Westwood High School to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5H, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by St. Joseph the Worker to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5I, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Save the Family Foundation of Arizona to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5J, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa's Idea Museum to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds to help underwrite a preschool-age art and literacy program. Item 5K, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa's Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds to provide new bicycles and storage renovation for the Park Ranger Squad. Item 5L, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa's Police Department to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds to be used for a mobile field force team transport vehicle. Item 5M, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa's Transportation Department to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds to be used for bike and pedestrian safety training video and booklet development. Item 5N, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the Arizona Museum of Natural History Foundation to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5O, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Child Crisis Arizona to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5P, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by East Valley Adult Resources Incorporated to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5Q, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Gene Lewis Boxing Club to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5R, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Arizona Museum of Natural History Foundation to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5S, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Save the Family Foundation of Arizona to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5T, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to accept grant funds to be used for training, equipment, and supplies for the Police Department's Forensic Services Division. Item 5U, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds to purchase a replacement SUV and bomb suit for the Police Department's Rapid Response Task Force. Item 5B has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5W, act on resolution approving an increase in the maximum dollar amount for individual job orders under existing job order master contracts for the following construction services: general, landscape, utility, water and wastewater, gas line, and transportation, and authorizing the city manager to approve future job orders under the job order master contracts. Item 5X, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Raging Wire Data Centers relating to approximately 86 acres of property located near the northwest corner of Elliott and Signal Butte Roads for the purpose of opting in to the Elliott Road Technology Corridor Zoning Overlay. Item 5Y, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Hawk Ventures LLC relating to approximately 63 acres of property located near the northeast corner of Elliott Road and the Crismon Road alignment for the purpose of opting in to the Elliott Road Technology Corridor Zoning Overlay. Item 5Z, act on resolution setting May 20th, 2019, as a public hearing date to review the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 annual assessments for the Mesa Town Center Improvement District Number 228. The proposed final assessments do not include any rate increases. Item 5AA, act on resolution endorsing the creation of the Golden Groves Irrigation Water Delivery District that is generally bounded by East Main Street in the north, East Second Avenue in the south, South Temple Street on the west, and South Metlock Street on the east. Final designation of the district is determined by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Item 5AB, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Animal Control Division. Item 5AC, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Transportation Department. Item 5AD, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Business Services Department. Item 5AE, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for Falcon Field Airport. Item 5AF, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Engineering Department. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 18-00984 within the 700 block of South Staple Drive and the 1,200 block of East 8th Avenue located south of Broadway and the east side of Staple. Rezone and site plan review to allow for a commercial development. Item 6B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 19-00070 within the 8,000 block of East Ray Road located west of Hawes Road on the north side of Ray Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for an industrial development. Item 6C, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 18-00806 within the 3,100 to 3,400 blocks of South Ellsworth Road located north of Elliott Road and the west side of Ellsworth Road. Rezone, site plan review, and a special use permit for a reduction in parking. This request will allow for an industrial development. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 18-00980... by Arizona Museum of Natural History Foundation to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5S, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Save the Family Foundation of Arizona to the Ochjin Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5T, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to accept grant funds to be used for training, equipment and supplies for the Police Department's Forensic Services Division. Item 5U, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds to purchase a replacement SUV and bomb suit for the Police Department's Rapid Response Task Force. Item 5B has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5W, act on resolution approving an increase in the maximum dollar amount for individual job orders under existing job order master contracts for the following construction services: general, landscape, utility, water and wastewater, gas line and transportation, and authorizing the city manager to approve future job orders under the job order master contracts. Item 5X, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Raging Wire Data Centers relating to approximately eighty-six acres of property located near the northwest corner of Elliott and Signal Butte Roads for the purpose of opting in to the Elliott Road Technology Corridor zoning overlay. Item 5Y, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Hawk Ventures LLC relating to approximately sixty-three acres of property located near the northeast corner of Elliott Road and the Crismon Road alignment for the purpose of opting in to the Elliott Road Technology Corridor zoning overlay. Item 5Z, act on resolution setting May twentieth, twenty nineteen, as a public hearing date to review the proposed fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual assessments for the Mesa Town Center Improvement District Number Two Twenty Eight. The proposed final assessments do not include any rate increases. Item 5AA, act on resolution endorsing the creation of the Golden Groves Irrigation Water Delivery District that is generally bounded by East Main Street in the north, East Second Avenue in the south, South Temple Street on the west, and South Matlock Street on the east. Final designation of the district is determined by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Item 5AB, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Animal Control Division. Item 5AC, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Transportation Department. Item 5AD, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Business Services Department. Item 5AE, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for Falcon Field Airport. Item 5AF, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Engineering Department. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON eighteen dash zero zero nine eight four within the seven hundred block of South Staple Drive and the twelve hundred block of East Eighth Avenue located south of Broadway and the east side of Staple. Rezone and site plan review to allow for a commercial development. Item 6B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON nineteen dash zero 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 seven zero within the eight thousand block of East Ray Road located west of Hawes Road on the north side of Ray Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for an industrial development. Item 6C, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON eighteen dash zero zero eight zero six within the thirty-one hundred to thirty-four hundred blocks of South Ellsworth Road located north of Elliott Road and the west side of Ellsworth Road. Rezone, site plan review, and a special use permit for a reduction in parking. This request will allow for an industrial development. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON eighteen dash zero zero nine eight zero within the twenty-six hundred block of North Power Road located south of McDowell Road on the east side of Power. Rezone and site plan reviews will allow for a multi-residence development. Item 7A, act on ordinance regarding ZON eighteen dash zero zero nine three three located within the ten thousand eight hundred to eleven thousand six hundred blocks of East Williamsfield Road, south side, the six thousand and sixty-three hundred blocks of South Signal Butte Road on the east side, the six thousand and sixty-three hundred blocks of South Mountain Road on the west side, the six thousand and sixty-five hundred blocks of South Mountain Road east side, and the six thousand and sixty-three hundred blocks of South Meridian Road on the west side. This is located south of Williamsfield and east of Signal Butte. Rezone to modify an existing planned area development and site plan review to allow for single residential development. And item 7B, act on ordinance regarding ZON nineteen dash zero 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 one six located within the seventy-one hundred to seventy-six hundred blocks of East Elliott Road and the thirty-one hundred to thirty-five hundred blocks of South Sausman Road located north of Elliott Road and west of Sausman Road. Rezone to create the Red Hawk Employment Opportunity Zone to establish zoning to guide future development of employment and industrial uses. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Nicely done. If we didn't discourage applause in the council chambers, I would call for applause right now. We do have, oh, Ms. Mickelson, has anyone requested to speak on an item that's currently on the consent agenda?
No request.
Thank you. We have a motion made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is item 5V. I'll read that in so everyone knows what we're talking about. This was removed from the consent agenda. This is requesting approval for staff to continue negotiations to acquire certain property located in the twenty-two hundred block, twenty-two hundred block of North Center Street for the construction of athletic fields and in order to avoid construction delays, authorizing and directing staff that fee title or other interests in and possession of certain property be acquired by the City of Mesa through eminent domain as a matter of public necessity. We do, we received a brief staff report downstairs, but we do have a blue card that's been filed. And I would invite forward at this time, Mr. Verl Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I do not know the property owners in question, but I want to speak about the process and the need. And a disclaimer that what I, some of what I will say is not in coordination with Councilman Whitaker's remarks downstairs. This process represents the brute force of government and should be used only in the most extreme circumstances. Private property is one of the three bedrock foundation principles of a free people. This complex is meant to replace the fields near the Cubs Stadium. A new development to occupy that location has not even been finalized and the start of construction date has not been established. It may not even happen for months or possibly even years. I did a quick search of the properties in this area of Mesa and found three sites that may serve well this process for this project. Two of those sites reside along Center Street. One is a piece of farm ground located at Cinder and Brown. Has the possibility of an agreement with the tribe north of us been discussed? I asked myself if there are any other considerations before arriving at this decision for this piece of property. What were they? I did a quick calculation of the possible land value and considering at least a recent land auction and the value of usable land there involved, this property owner may well be closer to the real value of his property than the appraisal supplied to the city. We all know that appraisals can be a bit misleading. In a recent land auction, the top price bid was thirty-five percent over the appraisal price. I could see why a person would resist the offer made by the city. The value and return on their property will accelerate faster by holding on to the land than receiving the money in exchange. As was heard downstairs by our city manager, this property is accelerating rapidly in value. Even the threat of enforcement should not be used unless an emergency arises. I don't think an athletic field really fits that bill. Neither should a person have this pressure hanging over them as long as negotiations are continuing. I ask you to table this item, continue the negotiations. I feel the solution is somewhere in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Counsel, any discussion on this item? Mr. Whitaker.
I'll just make a quick statement since I asked to take this off consent, but from my perspective, you know, when any time government comes and enforces your hand to take your property, I think it should be done extremely delicately and to do that for park, in my opinion, is completely unnecessary. So I'll be voting against this item tonight.
Thank you. Other council comments? I have one. Mr. Freeman.
Perhaps, Mr. Smith, you can give us the parameters, how eminent domain is used and what public purposes?
Sure. Mayor, vice mayor, and council. Eminent domain can be for public use in necessity and has to, the property owner has to get just compensation. Many times it's referred to just as public necessity. And I'll read part of the Arizona Treatise on it. Courts in Arizona have long followed the broad view of public use, which has been defined to include any of the following: use by the public, public benefit, public advantage or convenience, promoting the public welfare, promoting the general objectives and purposes of the governmental entity. And so it has a very broad definition. It includes, obviously, a number of roadways, parks, includes art centers, and it can include police substations and fire stations and so forth. And so there's, you know, it's a broad definition. I don't think the property owner has any disagreement on that or this area, from my understanding. It really is, what is the just compensation, or sometimes also referred to as the market value, and sort of that's really where it's coming down to. And in fact, this property owner is selling this property. And so it's just a matter of who they sell it to. Do they sell it to a developer or us, and what's the value, and so valuation? So I don't even think the concept of selling the property is even at issue. They're selling it right now. So it's just a matter of valuation. And so, like I said down in the study session, in the last decade, we've been able to resolve every case in which this council has authorized condemnation either through negotiations or through mediation, and we've not gone to a trial in more than a decade. So thank you, counsel.
Thank you. I know we did have a staff presentation and council discussion downstairs. I didn't weigh in, so I'll do so now. First, I think it's important to point out here that no one is being hurt in this scenario. This is vacant land that was purchased by a land speculator several years ago for one point two million dollars. They then attempted to rezone the property for residential. The council, on multiple occasions, said, no, this is not an appropriate piece for residential development. It's adjacent to our City of Mesa Police Shooting Range, also adjacent to the Hazardous Materials Disposal Center, adjacent to a landfill. For multiple reasons, this piece of property was never a proper candidate for residential development. And so the price that's been offered as a result of the appraisal that's been done is more than three times the amount that was, that the land speculator paid for just a few years ago. So why are we going through this process? We're going through this process because there's a disagreement over price. We have a buyer and a seller, and there's a negotiation going on. These are sophisticated real estate professionals that are dealing with one another. And when you have a disagreement over price, the best way to resolve it is to go to a third party and have that mediated. The eminent domain process is the legal process we go to because it's transparent. There's no backroom dealing, there's no winks and handshakes. It's done out in open based on real estate appraisals. And the rule is that we, as the government, are bound to pay the legally demonstrated fair value of the property. So there is, there's nothing inappropriate going on here. This is just how two people that want to sell a piece of property are going to resolve the outstanding issue of what the price ought to be. We have been instructed by the voters to do a few things, particularly in this most recent election. We were in, we've been instructed to build fire stations and police stations and streets and soccer fields. And we have a desperate need in this community for more lighted ball fields, and that has been explained and presented to the voters, and they've agreed with that. If Mr. Herschberg were here, he'd tell you, our Parks and Rec Director, that we could fill, we could schedule more than a thousand hours a week of additional lighted ball fields. So this is a pressing city need, and I am delighted that the voters approved going forward with building more fields like this. So again, this is business as usual. This is the process it's gone through many times, quite often at the request of the purchasers so that they can take advantage of some of the legal benefits of going through the eminent domain process. So for all of those reasons, I'm very comfortable with proceeding with this matter. Any additional comments?
I'll just make a few comments of my frustration with the entire process. I understand it's a normal course of business and widely practiced for many of the reasons that have been stated today. I also make an assumption on behalf of the seller now that they are not opposing this process because they have not come forward in any public process nor to any council members that I'm aware of and I know are not with me. So then I see it as a negotiation tool. But what I don't like about it is being in a position to make an assumption of clarity of what's going on here. Is this a welcome, a tool used by both parties to come to an agreement on price? Or is this actually, you know, the city, you know, expressing its, you know, right to take property for public use? So given this, I tell you, it's a very difficult situation and finding the clarity as a council member and also a member of the public. I'm conflicted which way. By principle, I want to say no, and on this particular situation, I understand that, why we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Mr. Whitaker.
So on the note of, you know, how much an individual made on a speculative investment from 2015, I think we forget that they could have easily lost fifty percent of the value on the property if the market had gone down. And, you know, that's, I don't necessarily mean that's relevant to bring up how much money the speculator made, whether they made three times their money or four times their money. Their downside risk is they could have lost fifty percent of their money just as likely. And then we bring up the issue of, you know, the voters gave us, you know, this, the soccer fields, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I think if you had put on the ballot to the voters, you know, do you support building soccer fields and using eminent domain to take property, you know, by any means necessary to build the soccer fields, I think the results probably would have been a little different. I did a quick poll on my Facebook site, and I had about four hundred people respond. You know, do you support the government taking your property to build a park through the process of eminent domain? And out of almost four hundred respondents, it had a ninety-five percent of people that said no, they disagree with that process. The last point that I'll make is that I don't necessarily think the seller of a property should have eminent domain, the threat of eminent domain hanging over their head during the negotiation process. And I just think this is setting a dangerous precedence in which instances we're going to just take land from people.
Well, I'll weigh in again as well. I think you're right. It's not relevant whether the owner of this property is making money or losing money. What the only, what's quest, what's relevant is what's the fair price for this piece of property, given the current economics? And that is what this process is calculated to find out. And it's just fortuitous that they are, in fact, making a fair return on their property. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, in my previous life, I've set through eminent domain opportunities, and I was never a fan of eminent domain. You know, I think, you know, if a seller's selling a car and a buyer's selling a car, they come to an agreed-upon price. If they don't come to an agreed-upon price, then they don't have a deal. Both parties walk away. And I look at this sort of the same way. I'm like my colleague, Councilmember Duff, I'm a little bit undecided, honestly, how I want to go through this. I'm not a big fan of eminent domain. I know that we use it for the betterment of our community. I don't necessarily know that soccer fields are the betterment of our community. It could be argued either way. I know that we were going to have another issue in my district in the same situation. You know, my wish is that we always sit down with the landowner and come to a compromise, whatever that compromise may be. I really struggle with this one because I think really this is sort of a government overreach. This is government putting the pressure on a land seller, whether he's a speculator or a landowner or what have you. I mean, I'd really truly love to hear the landowner, you know, if he were here, tell us that he's willing to sell his land and that he wants us to go through this process so that he can move forward. So I struggle with that piece.
Yes, Mr. Brady.
I think the answer is they are trying to sell the property. I think the dispute is what's the value? And they valued it at, with the concept that there would be residential development here. That's the price, their price is based on the assumption of this being a residential development. We know that the council's not going to approve that. So we wouldn't, we don't want to overpay for the taxpayers' money on a piece of property that we've appraised at a much lower amount. But this is a very sophisticated seller. They are selling the property. They've known this for years, even when we started the conversation on the bond election. So this is, I think the reason they're not here is because they just, this is a process they go through. The process will allow both sides to make, I guess, their position as far as why the value should be what it is. This just allows us to move forward to get the project moving. I don't think they're offended by that. I don't think that they're upset by that. They're just trying to get the highest value they can. But their presumption is the value that they have a contract on is assuming there's going to be a new subdivision here. And we don't agree with that. We don't agree that should be in the calculation of the price because we know the councils at least twice have said, we don't agree that there should be residential here. So we don't think we should be paying a premium to a developer who doesn't have this property entitled as a residential zoning. So that's just, that's really the dispute is, and then where do we find kind of the in-between? And so that's where we're hoping this will allow us. Believe me, I know representatives of this deal, if there was a concern and they felt like they were being mistreated, I'm absolutely certain he would have expressed that to me and let me know. Because we do a lot of different transactions with the same firm over and over again. And so I think if they felt like there was something in the relationship and the way that we were strong-arming them, I'm pretty confident to tell you that on a personal basis and business basis, this person would have let me know. I have not heard from this individual. So my sense is this is a business decision and a process that they're looking to move forward. We're just declaring the public necessity. If we were to execute, ultimately, if we're going to come and exercise the eminent right to take the property, we'd come back to council and let you know that. Right now, that's not what we're doing. We're talking about a conversation, we want to continue the dialogue and the prescribed process established by law that allows us to get to a price that both parties can agree to.
Thank you very much. Additional discussion? If not, we have a motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please vote. The vote is six aye with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our agenda is item eight, items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, I do have one request, no, I'm sorry, two requests to speak. Do you have any additional cards? Thank you. First, we'll hear from Mr. Verl Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth, we have three minutes.
I'd like to begin with playing a short clip.
A short clip.
Oh, that's a new recording. Sorry about that.
Was there an appraisal for twenty-five point five million dollars? Can we clarify that, please?
Real estate is here. I was looking through the file today. The appraisal that I found was for the fifteen point six million for approximately thirty-two acres.
Yeah, what's the date on the appraisal? Yeah, what's the date on the appraisal?
Uh, that was November of 2000...
I'm sorry, Mayor and Council, I don't have that specific...
The last year?
Yes, yes. In the last six months.
So was there ever an appraisal done that, that valued it at $25.5 million?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
As of January the 7th, the appraisal for $25.5 million was already eight months old. Every person sitting in front of me, and many sitting behind me, now know that that was an outright lie. Not one single person with knowledge of the truth, from staff to administration to the council, offered to refute and correct that statement that night. Now every one of you know that was a lie. I received my copy from the city attorney's office in October of 2018. Two of your former colleagues have encouraged you as a council to reverse the decision and the direction that you're going, and honor the word of that council 21 years ago when they purchased the property at Recker and Thomas for a future district park. I and many of the citizens of Mesa have called upon you to stop and reverse your course. See these cameras? They're recording every vote that you take. And every vote that you take is applied to your integrity and your honor. None of you will be exempt from the stench and the stain that this issue is creating. There's also another eye watching each of you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. That's your time. Take a sentence or two and wrap up, please.
Rationalize all you want, but there is no right way to do the wrong thing. I have a list of 40 other pieces that I intend to share with the community of Mesa pertaining to this project. I hope that you will honor the word of our council 21 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Next, we'd like to welcome visiting from the great town of Gilbert, their Vice Mayor, Mr. Eddie Cook. Eddie, thank you for being here.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, greetings from your friends and neighbors to the south. Two years ago, I had the pleasure of attending a leadership conference. And in this leadership conference, there was a session that got my attention, and that session was titled Civility in the Workplace. I was intrigued. I attended the session, and the premise of the session was about, in your organization or company, do you have a policy on civility? So I think about my own company that I work for, is a global company, and I reviewed a lot of its employee handbooks, and I did not see anything like that. And then I also decided, well, let me look at the town of Gilbert and look at its handbook. There are things in there like character counts, respect, and kindness and all that, but there wasn't really anything related to a policy and civility. So, over a year ago, I asked our council if I could lead a team of individuals that could come up with a policy and civility. It took us 10 months, and as last December, we brought, I brought this to the council, and we created resolution, which you may have, but I do have copies of that resolution. I would like to offer that to you. And that resolution passed unanimously. As we know, hyper-partisanship is becoming the norm. And we know that our community, our silent majority, rather us build community and not divide community. Where incivility means that people don't belong. And that's a tragedy, when we as leaders of our own communities, hopefully, look at our community from a nonpartisan perspective, where kindness and generosity and collaboration, and being able to agree to disagree respectfully, is really the new norm. So I'm here just to share with you that I'm visiting 91 cities and towns in the state of Arizona to share this message of our resolution. You're not the first for my visit, and I have many more to go over the next few months. I'm here to basically just ask the Mesa team to consider your own policy of civility for your community. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Cook. That concludes the items on our agenda. Counsel, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you very much, Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.